Good afternoon. I call this November 10th, 2020 special meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. This meeting is a joint special meeting with the RDU AA representatives to discuss the draft land use plan and the airport overlay. Thank you to those watching via live stream and those who are watching the recording of this meeting. On November 14th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. A link to this page will also be placed on the Town of Morrisville's social media pages. At this time, I'll ask Eric Smith, our town clerk, to conduct a roll call of our council members. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Mayor Colley?
Present.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Fender?
Present.
Councilmember Garamello?
Present.
Councilmember Ralph?
Present.
Councilmember Robati?
Present.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Present.
All councils present.
Thank you, sir. Prior to further action, I will ask if there's a motion and a second to invoke Rule 19.
I make a motion, we invoke Rule 19. Sorry.
I have a motion from Councilmember Ralph. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
May I have a second from Mayor Protem Johnson? Mr. Smith, if you can conduct a roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Ralph?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamello?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Present. Aye.
The motion to invoke Rule 19 passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll conduct the welcome. Present with council via teams is John Kane, Chairman of the RDU AA Board, Vice Chairman Patrick Hanna, and Board Member Dickie Thompson, David Krishner, David Morgan, Napoleon Wallace, Sepida Saedi, and Rob Tier. Joining us from the RDU AA Executive Leadership Team is RDU AA President and CEO Michael Langa, Chief Operating Officer Bill Sanderfer, General Counsel Aaron Locklear, Outside Counsel Peter Kirsch, and VP of Communications Crystal Feldman. Michelle Spiegel, Planning Director, and Brad West, Senior Planner, will provide an overview of the town's long-term development strategies, the land use plan, and the airport overlay process. Now, many years ago, Morrisville grew due to its being located at a crossroads, then due to its being a railroad station. More recently, our growth and success has been enhanced by the proximity of the Raleigh-Durham International Airport. We have gathered here today to recognize the hereditary events that transportation have bestowed upon our region and continue our productive collaborative partnerships with the providers of transit of all types which help connect our diverse community to an enhanced quality of life here in the greater Morrisville region. At this time, I would like to recognize RDU Board Chair John Kane for some comments. Chairman Kane, would you like to make any brief comments before we begin?
Yes, thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mayor Colley, council members and staff. Thank you for inviting us this afternoon to have a conversation about an issue of mutual interest to the airport authority and the town of Morrisville. More than 80 years ago, the North Carolina General Assembly did a wonderful thing by creating the Raleigh-Durham Airport Authority. They had a vision when they established the authority. That vision was to build an airport between the cities of Raleigh and Durham that could someday achieve regional, statewide, national, and global importance by becoming the economic backbone of this community. If those legislators were alive today, I think they would be proud that their vision has been realized. It has come to light through RDU's impact on the significant economic growth in central and eastern North Carolina. In 2019, RDU served a record 14.2 million passengers, supported 230,000 aircraft operations, and 86,000 regional jobs, and generated more than $12 billion in economic impact. COVID-19 has certainly put a dent in those figures, but the strength of the local economy and the growing need for global connectivity mean we will reach and exceed those numbers once again in the future. However, economic growth does not come without challenges and competing interests. In the 1940s, the airport was built many miles from businesses and population centers. Today, business and population centers have grown closer toward RDU in part because of the benefits of being located next to the airport. As these centers have drawn closer, the authorities work cooperatively with neighboring communities to prevent residential development in high-noise areas. One of the best tools to preserve a balance of competing interests is federally required noise contours that essentially chart the most noise-impacted areas surrounding the airport due to aircraft overflight. The current noise contours are based on 1992 noise exposure maps. These maps allow both the airport and the nearby communities to plan effectively. In the early 1990s, airport overlay districts referred to as AODs were established around the noise contours. The AOD was established after a lengthy regional public process. As an illustration of the importance of the AOD at around the same time, RDU was sued by residents over noise, and RDU had to pay considerable damages. Residential development is prohibited within the AOD to protect residents from noise exposure. For the last 30 years, zoning protections in the AOD have been remarkably successful. In 2017, the authority adopted the Vision 2040 Long-Term Infrastructure Plan to accommodate more flights and larger aircraft over the next 25 years. As part of Vision 2040, the board considered land uses and future aircraft noise compatibility with the surrounding community. When the Vision 2040 Plan was adopted, the board reaffirmed that surrounding communities should use the 1992 noise exposure maps to make land use planning decisions. The 1992 maps provide the airport room to expand air service by creating a buffer between RDU and its neighbors. Ever since Vision 2040 was finalized, authority staff have worked closely with local communities, including the town of Morrisville, to promote continued use of the noise exposure maps and, more importantly, to maintain the integrity of the AODs. The proposed amendment to Morrisville's land use plan would signal a shift in more than 30 years of thoughtful and collaborative planning. It would alter the airport overlay districts and remove protections in high-noise areas where residential development has been prohibited for decades. As the region continues to grow, increased activity from more flights and larger aircraft will create more noise in that section of Morrisville. RDU staff has also participated on Morrisville Technical Advisory Committee to educate staff and their consultant on airport land use concerns and discourage the town from changing zoning regulations within the AOD. Despite our repeated objections, the town continues to consider authorizing the development of homes, including affordable housing within the AOD. Any type of residential development within the AOD, whether it's affordable housing, single or multifamily residences exposes RDU and the town to negative public sentiment and potential litigation from future residents. To be candid, allowing residential development in the AOD is a recipe for permanent disputes between RDU and its neighbors, something that we have all avoided for more than a generation. RDU opposes any change to the current AOD to protect the interests of the airport and the community it serves. Our goal is not to dictate how local communities should create their local land use plans. Our goal is to educate and advocate for the best interests of the airport and its neighboring communities. Leaving the AOD intact is a sensible long-term approach to make sure flight activity does not negatively impact area residents. The maintenance of the AODs also assures RDU long-term operational viability by preventing further residential encroachment. The council is in a unique position to preserve the future vitality of RDU and the quality of life in Morrisville. Decisions made by the town of Morrisville will impact nearly half the state. We ask that you preserve the AOD and consider one of the many alternatives already permissible in those high-noise areas. Thank you for the opportunity to have this open dialogue, and we look forward to further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman Kane. We really appreciate you bringing your team today for this discussion. At this time, I'd like to recognize Michelle Spiegel, our Planning Director. She's going to share some information. I'd ask everyone to please hold your questions and comments until the end of the presentations. Thank you. Ms. Spiegel?
Thank you, Mayor Colley. Our senior planner, Brad West, has really been leading the land use plan update for the town, so I'm going to hand it off to him in just a minute to provide an overview of that project, kind of where we are to date, and what's proposed in the current draft plan with the airport overlay district. Before doing that, I just wanted to recognize everyone that is here with us tonight from RDU. Obviously, you are vital to the region, play a large part in economic development. We're hopeful that we can work with you and find a way to be responsible with land use and still meet some of the town's goals for transit and other things. But really, I want to hand it off to Brad. I know time is limited, so he could start going through some more of the technical information with the land use plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And again, Brad West, Senior Planner, Morrisville Plan Department, and I am managing the land use plan update project. To give you a brief background on this project, we are currently operating under the 2009 land use plan. And for those of you who don't know out there in the audience, a land use plan is simply a guiding document filled with recommendations on how to develop over the next 10 to 20 years. They're non-binding, but they do set the foundation for future development code, zoning districts, et cetera. So it is important. It is sort of the first step into getting policy on the ground. And so again, like I said, in 2009, we adopted our current land use plan. As you can imagine, a lot has changed since then. We've grown exponentially. The region has grown exponentially, and so there is a lot to look back on and review. The current land use plan update process is about a two-and-a-half-year update process started in 2018. We're at the very tail end of that process. We do have a draft version of this update in-house and being reviewed soon by our council and Planning and Zoning Board in terms of a final draft. Part of this process of developing this plan involved a technical review committee. And fortunately, we were able to have a member of RDU, which you mentioned earlier, Mr. Kane, Ellis Caden was a member of that technical review committee. And Ellis provided some very good candid feedback to us in terms of the concerns about the noise contours, some of the initial proposals of the plan. We went into in-depth about the specific sub-areas in our plan that are impacted by these noise contours, and Ellis is very forthcoming about the airport's position. And so, on the flip side of that, the town is sort of taking a new look at this whole area east of NC 54. We just completed a major infrastructure, road infrastructure project, McCrimmon Parkway Extension, which has opened up the land essentially to new development. We also have the regional commuter rail system and possible bus rapid transit system that is being planned for to run from Garner all the way up towards Durham in RTP. And so we have, and by the way, bus rapid transit wasn't exactly, it was more of an emerging technology in the development of the 2009 plan, so that is something we're taking another look at and considering, whereas before we didn't really consider it back then. And so we're trying to accomplish certain transit goals, land use compatibility goals with transit, and also diversify the uses in this new corridor away from more industrial uses, but more towards a diverse set of uses which may include residential. And so right now, it's really just as a recommendation in the plan for a modification, not an elimination, but a modification of the airport noise overlay zone, basically to allow for some multifamily residential. Since talking to Ellis Caden at RDU and since our technical advisory committee meetings, we wanted to be directly responsive to a lot of the feedback we got from Ellis. And so we've since sort of revised some of these propositions. We are not proposing a full amendment of Airport Overlay A, which is our most restrictive airport overlay, the one that restricts residential. We are trying to maintain that in areas that may be affected by a future third runway. We understand that the addition of a third runway at RDU is very important and that that may have an impact on noise contours. Second, we have eliminated, or we are not recommending, single-family residential detached or attached development in this entire area east of 54 and the revised airport overlay. And we're also third requiring, or recommending requiring, some noise attenuation, noise mitigation standards to help further mitigate the impacts of airport noise. And again, a lot of this came to be earlier on with taking a second look at this corridor, but also it came to be because we received a published modified noise contour lines from 2014. So these were, you know, the current noise contours in place and the current overlay districts are modeled after these 1992 contours that you mentioned, Mr. Kane. And specifically, they are outlining the 65 decibel area threshold, which from what we understand is FAA's cutoff for what they consider noxious to certain sensitive uses like residential. And so in 2014, we were given, or we were shown, the new revised airport noise contours, which showed a dramatic shift of that 65 decibel line out of Morrisville virtually completely from what we could tell. And so that, we thought that was great news because we had already planned on building a new corridor up there, and we were looking to sort of steer development into more of a diverse build-out instead of just industrial as we've seen today. And we also wanted to ensure that the transit station at McCrimmon and NC 54 was complemented by compatible land uses. Transit stations are very important to Morrisville, and we want to ensure its success. And as many of you know, it needs, transit stations sort of need a critical mass of activity around them in order to have certain ridership numbers and for them to be viable. And so, these new 2014 contour lines are sort of what our standard is, and basically sort of justify a lot of our motivation into moving in this direction. We are, from what we understand and confirming with FAA, we are fully within their FAA guidelines. In fact, we are, and I guess someone's, good, someone's scrolling through the difference there. So you can see, if you go back up to the previous two slides, the dramatic reduction. I apologize, I'm not controlling these slides, so I'm going to have to shout out orders here. So if you could go back to the 1992 contour line, which should be the next slide. All right, perfect. Yeah, so this is what we base our current contour lines on. This is what our current airport noise overlays districts are based on. It's that orange, and I know it's hard for a lot of folks to see, it's that sort of light orangy color right before you get to the red, kind of near I-40, if you can tell where I-40 is on this map. But if you look at the key, you can see the exact color. So that was 1992. Planes were obviously not a lot noisier back then. This is right after the end of the Cold War. Technology has changed a lot. And so, and of course, the flight patterns have changed. I believe RDU was a hub at this point in time. So if you go to 2014, person who's controlling? Thank you. And so now, you can see a dramatic decrease in that 65 decibel contour line. So you'll notice that it's completely, virtually, it's, I apologize for not having Morrisville's jurisdictional boundary on there, but it is completely out of Morrisville's jurisdiction. And so, we are operating under these noise contour lines. We have double-checked, like I said, with the FAA to ensure that we are in compliance with their land use compatibility guidelines, which are being shown now. You'll notice that we are, in terms of where is Morrisville situated, we are that little blue arrows pointing between the 55 and 65 decibel line area, and you'll notice that that entire column is yellow, which means that virtually anything can be built there and is considered, quote, "compatible" in that area. And so, we took that to heart, but we do understand that RDU has concerns about the residential and other sensitive uses in the area. So in order to better address, better respond to some of the concerns raised by RDU, specifically in the technical advisory committee meetings, we have put, we've sort of restrained ourselves in terms of what we're proposing. You know, we are not only meeting FAA guidelines, but we are exceeding them in ways, in terms of requiring noise attenuation when it's not even necessarily recommended in this zone. We're looking to recommend prohibiting single-family development even though it is allowed in the FAA or recommended as compatible in the FAA chart. And of course, we're leaving the area around the third runway north of town, or north part of town near the former airport outlet mall as prohibitive to residential development. And this is just a summary of everything I've said here. And so this is a delineation of exactly what I'm talking about here. So you'll notice the orange area is what we're leaving alone. We understand that the runway, third runway, would be north of the current airport facility, sort of near the Briar Creek Reservoir. So just in case there are any noise contour impacts up there, we've played it more safe and sorry and have completely left that area alone. Our focus is really on ensuring that there is a diversity of uses around McCrimmon Parkway Extension and also the McCrimmon Transit Station for commuter rail or bus rapid transit. Whoever's moving the cursor can circle around those two areas, that would be great, but if not, you can kind of see where they are in the, yeah, there you go. So that's the McCrimmon Station area. And so, again, transit is extremely important to us. We want to make sure that we have a viable station location. We know from Go Triangle and others that residential is a key essential component of a viable transit stop. It just is. They need the critical mass of ridership in order to make those areas work. Any compatible mixed-use, walkable land uses around these transit stations, that's not possible with the current airport overlay arrangement. So we know that there needs to be a shift in order to achieve that goal. We also hear from our major employers that there is a high demand for housing near the workplace. You know, we get, our former Chamber of Commerce president was very adamant about that. You know, that's, it's a big recruiting tool for a lot of large companies to have housing within, ideally walking distance, but at least a short drive away from the place of employment, but also amenitize the area with retail and other amenities, potentially parks, so that folks sort of can live, work, and play in one area. And so this is kind of the direction and motivation of why we're doing all this. And so we just, you know, aside from the compatibility with transit, you know, housing opportunities is also very important to us. Now, again, these are all recommendations at this point. It's in draft form. The final draft is expected towards the end of this year for Planning and Zoning Board. Eventually, it'll be handed over to Town Council. Of course, the airport is extremely important to us. It is an important regional partner and is the reason for a lot of Morrisville's success, obviously. And so, we want to ensure a good working relationship with the airport, and we're certainly attempting to do that by being responsive to the concerns expressed in the technical advisory committee meetings. That was a mouthful, so if I missed something, or you have any questions, happy to answer questions at this time if it's okay with the participants.
So at this time, does anyone have any broad clarification needs on this? Because we still have some more staff presentation before, and we're going to hear from the airport before we actually get into the meat of the discussion. I'll recognize Councilmember Ralph with his hand up.
Mayor, I'll wait till the end until the other presentations are done in the interest of maximizing our time. So I'll hold off on my questions.
Okay. Seeing nothing else right now. Brad, if you want to go through the timeline and the next part of your presentation?
Oops, sorry. So yeah, so again, the timeline is, so right now, we're in draft form, final draft form approaching in December is where we're anticipating the final draft to be completed. That would be under review by Planning and Zoning Board. Once they form and articulate a recommendation of approval or denial or approval of changes, that'll be forwarded to our Town Council. We're aiming for January, February timeline with that, or just say early next year to be safe. Then I'm sure there might be some final tweaks to that plan, and then we'd have adoption perhaps February, March timeframe. And so, once that plan is adopted, that becomes the policy direction. And then subsequently, there are actual rezonings, tax amendments, overlay changes such as this one, that would be up for consideration and discussion. Those would be the actual code language changes, things like that, you know, things that are actually going to affect development on the ground. We are, staff is currently working on some tax amendments that could be quickly implemented after the plan is adopted. Just how quickly, it's still, you know, kind of up in the air, but the hope would be that we can get the ball rolling as soon as the plan is adopted on at least some strategic areas that are, you know, under a lot of development pressure, such as this area that we're amending. So don't have a specific timeline on when we would tackle this actual overlay amendment if it were to go through, as is. But our intent is to do it fairly quickly after, you know, within a few months after plan adoption. So, but again, still in draft form, still recommendations at this point, so just wanted to clarify that timeline for you.
And Brad, this is Michelle again. Just on the agenda, we also have kind of an item on the current rezoning request up for the old outlet mall. So just to clarify for everyone, I think everyone is aware that we have a rezoning application in for that site. The property is known as The Stitch, it's the old outlet mall. And we have received some letters on that from RDU and the FAA. We did clarify with the FAA, I think there was some confusion that the rezoning was being done to allow residential. With that rezoning, residential would not be allowed. It would still be prohibited by the airport overlay district, which, based on the draft land use plan, we are not proposing to amend in that area. But I think there has been some confusion that perhaps that rezoning would permit residential, so just wanted to clarify that it would not. And the intent of that application is really to allow for more of an office-like science use on that property.
Thank you, Planning Director Spiegel, for clarifying that. Was there anything else on that list from the agenda, Michelle or Brad, that you'd like to clarify further before I pass presentation to RDU?
I think covered the land use plan, at least my end. I know the rezoning is more of Michelle's territory, but yeah, I think we covered the general gist of it, but again, open, certainly open to questions at some point.
Okay. Does anyone have any clarifying questions or questions about what Brad's presented before we ask for the airport to present their perspective? This time, I'll recognize Councilmember Ralph.
Yeah, my only question is just to clarify, my wifi wasn't clear that the rezoning with The Stitch under the current airport overlay would not allow residential if that rezoning went through, correct? I just wanted to clarify, okay. And at the end, I'd like us, I'll let the other presentations go, but I want to learn a little bit more about the other legal cases that were brought against the airport and at that time, were there any, you know, noise abatement processes in place? And maybe we can defer to Councilor Gray, just in terms of how legal liabilities changed and, you know, that kind of stuff, as we look at coming to a situation where it's a win-win for both parties. So I'll leave it at that, and I'll let the presentation go on. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move along to that after we hear from RDU. So at this time, we'd like to invite RDU AA representatives to share an overview and perspective of the RDU AA noise exposure maps and airport overlay district. Again, let's please hold your questions and comments until the end of their presentation, and then we'll have, hopefully, a good, robust, productive discussion. So I'll pass it back to you, Chairman Kane.
Sorry, I was on mute. I'll turn it over to Mike and his team. I think Bill Sanderfer is going to do the presentation on behalf of the airport. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll take it, Mr. Kane. I'll just dive right in. Can I get control? I'm going to share my screen, I believe. Let me try that. If somebody can tell me whether or not they see this, that would be great.
I see Raleigh-Durham Airport Authority land use compatibility discussion, so you've successfully shared.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And a good, good afternoon, everybody. Bill Sandifer, I'm the Chief Operating Officer from the Airport Authority. Many of you have heard from me before. It's nice to see you again. This will be a similar presentation, probably a little bit more detail in, in certain areas that, that, that will be obvious as we get to the slide. Really kind of five bullet points. Brad did such a fantastic job of kind of talking about our involvement and feedback during the draft land use plan update process. I'll probably just touch on a couple of things and move forward. I'm going to introduce Mr. Kirsch, our outside counsel, when we get to background of history noise litigation. Then I'm going to drill in, as I've done before, on noise exposure maps and contours and the considerations around that. Talk about the draft land use plan and then really kind of summarize what, what the authority request is, which in many respects was already articulated very well by our Chair, Mr. Kane. So, so real quickly, again, Brad did a fantastic job here. Look, we, we recognize how challenging a process it can be for developing a new land use plan, that the staff and the consultant did an excellent job of pulling together what I'll call competing interests, varying stakeholders, including the Airport Authority, and, and really listened. And that, that's evident in, in my mind by listening to Brad and how he very articulately explained kind of our noise contours and, and what they mean and then how that works with the FAA, did a fantastic job there. One thing I will point out is, is I think our message has been consistent even well before the, the draft land use plan process update has been in effect. And that is, it's kind of the do no harm. You know, we, the Airport Overlay District has served us well, and us meaning the community, for a very, very long period of time. And it will continue to serve us well from a planning perspective well into the future. And to put a finer point on that, I'm, I'm going to introduce Mr. Peter Kirsch. Peter is, is outside counsel. He's represented the authority on, on a range of issues over the course of many, many years. Peter is probably one of those people in, in our business that I would describe as preeminent in his field in terms of the law and FAA policy around airport noise compatibility planning. And we're fortunate in that Peter was counsel for the authority when the authority was the, the defendant in litigation related to noise back in the eighties and nineties. So, so I will turn it over to Mr. Kirsch and he will talk about the background and history of the noise litigation.
Thank you, Bill. It's a pleasure to be here. And I was trying to think of the last time I've spoken to the Morrisville Town Council. I think it's been in excess of 30 years. So it's good to, good to be before you again tonight. What I want to talk about is why land use compatibility is important, not just to RDU and the airport, but also to the local community. To, to put not too fine a point on it, airports and residential areas are never compatible. There's no way to make them fully compatible. There are ways to mitigate, there are ways to abate, but at the end of the day, the kind of noise created by airports is not compatible with residential. It is enormously difficult. Many would argue that it's impossible to correct noise compatibility issues after the fact. In other words, if residential population already exists around an airport, it is very, very difficult to control the impacts of that. Planning therefore is indispensable. So the kind of action that the town is going through today is really critical to make sure that you look forward, not a year, not five years, but 25 or 30 or 40 years, to make sure that you're thinking about what could happen to the airport in the future and what could happen to the town as well. There are a number of reasons why airports and residential are incompatible, and some of them are pretty obvious. Angry residents may be the, the most obvious. But also there's reduction in property values and there's litigation, as Councilmember Rao asked about earlier and we'll get to, litigation is not unimportant. But the other two are critical as well. That is, this is not just an impact on the airport and the airport authority, but also on local elected officials who have to confront the obvious questions about why residential exists near the airport. If we can go to the next slide, please. So how did we get here? I, I had the privilege of working with the Airport Authority in the late 1980s and early 1990s when the airport overlay district was being proposed. And, and it's no exaggeration to say that in the late 1980s, the Triangle region was really recognized as a national leader in ensuring compatibility between the airport and its neighbors. And to do this, the communities around the airport entered into an unusual arrangement to create a noise working group, this was in 1989, that recommended a collaborative, balanced approach to make sure that noise issues were addressed, that planning was addressed, and the future of the airport was addressed. As a result, we have now today a national model that's recognized all over the country that's helped RDU grow to accommodate growth in the region without creating the conflicts between communities and airports that are so common all over the country. If we can go to the next slide, please. Now, at the same time that we had that collaboration, regrettably, we also had litigation. As, as Mr. Sandifer mentioned earlier, RDU was sued for noise damages by over 3,000 residents in the early 1990s. Interestingly enough, most of those residents at the time lived outside the noise contour, what we refer to as the 65 decibel DNL contour. In other words, under the FAA's definition, under the FAA standard, these were residents that were not affected by noise. They nevertheless sued the Airport Authority and in 1992, the authority entered into a the airport to continue to operate. But at the same time, it did not solve, of course, the, the noise problem. It merely solved the problem of, of these particulars.
Excuse me, Mr. Kirsch? Uh, I seem to be losing Mr. Kirsch. Is anyone else?
Yeah, I think his connection might be wacky.
Okay.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it was me.
Mr. Kirsch, can you see or hear us?
Peter, are you back? Peter, we can see you. Can you hear me?
I cannot hear you. I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, and we can see you now.
That's good. Okay, well, I can, I'm beginning to see you. I'm afraid I, uh, welcome to the world of Zoom and everything else, but I
Well, if it'll help, we're on the slide called "The Grand Regional Compromise," a three-legged stool.
Just came up on my screen, so I apologize for that.
Sir, if you could go back one slide and go back to, you talked about the 100 plaintiffs with substantial awards. That's when we started to lose you. So if you could go back a sentence or two before that, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you, and I apologize. Welcome to technology, I suppose. So, so the, the case, litigation in the late 1980s, early 1990s was settled with the authority paying substantial money to about 100 plaintiffs. And the settlement produced a navigation easement, but no guarantee of cooperation and certainly no guarantee that there would be compatibility between these residents and the, and the airport. If we can go to the next slide, please. So what resulted from the noise compatibility and the noise working group planning effort in the late 1980s and early 1990s was really what I'll call grand regional compromise, a, a three-legged stool in which all the participants participated in and contributed to making sure that there would be compatibility between the airport and its neighbors. First of all, the Airport Authority agreed to, to noise abatement immediately around the airport. It agreed to preserve the buffer property around the airport. And it agreed to adopt a noise rule, that is, a restriction on certain operations at the airport in order to ensure that noise would, would be a defined level. The local governments agreed at that time to adopt zoning to protect against what we call encroachment. That is sort of the gradual increase of residential property near an airport. And finally, and perhaps most, most unusually, the airlines and the FAA signed on to this compromise, in which both agreed to accept the noise rule that limited the noisiest operations at the airport. Now, it's important to recognize that is very, very unusual. There are probably at most two or three times in the history of airports that the FAA, airlines, the community and the airport have agreed to a rule. And secondly, this was the next to the last noise rule ever adopted in the United States. In fact, federal law changed as a result of the RDU compromise to make sure that no one else could in fact also adopt noise rules. So it was, it was a, a critical national precedent in that respect in terms of creating this three-legged stool. We can go to the next slide, please. Now, the local government efforts were of course just as important as the efforts by the airlines and the, and the Airport Authority. And that is that all of the jurisdictions around the airport adopted zoning restrictions that were designed to coincide with what was at that time the 65 decibel contour. Morrisville took a somewhat less stringent approach than some of the other localities and only restricted residential property north of North Carolina Route 54. We can go to the next page, please. The good news is that for the last 40 years, this regional compromise has worked. And that is that the region continued to enjoy remarkable collaboration. They didn't, the, the region and the airport have not faced the sort of constant costly litigation threat that it seems that many, many airports of comparable and larger size have had to confront. Airport neighbors elsewhere complained constantly, how did you let this happen? That is, the airport came in either before or after the residential, why did you let residential get built near the airport? And you've avoided that kind of problem. And, and perhaps most importantly, the region, that is not just the Airport Authority but the local governments, have avoided the cost and the contentiousness of correcting land use problems that seem to be, at least for me, keep me busy and keep airports busy around the country. If we can go to the next slide, please. Now, what we're facing today is really a threat to that three-legged stool balance. And the reason is this is bigger than just Morrisville. By that I mean that compatibility requires cooperation and vigilance by all the parties. Everyone has to make sure that the terms of the deal, if you will, are, are respected. If one party violates the deal, then the other parties will be attempted to do the same and we could easily end up with a downward spiral in which other jurisdictions could say, well, if Morrisville is not respecting our collaborative agreement on zoning, then we won't either. And we will gradually increase zoning closer and closer to the airport and bring residential closer and closer to the airport. The carriers, the airlines could stop cooperating. That is, they could start scheduling more nighttime operations. And the FAA could deny funding and approval of projects in the future because they don't believe that our side of the table, if you will, is not respecting the, the agreement that was put in place in the early 1990s. So the final slide, please. So why is preserving the Airport Overlay District important to everybody? Most importantly, it is based not just on the past contours, but on future airport activity. And we can get into this issue a little bit more in the Q and A session, but predicting future noise is enormously difficult. And it is always better to take a cautious approach than to take an approach that says, I bet noise won't get any worse. Because changes really can't be rescinded once residential development has come closer to the airport. The 1992 noise exposure maps and contours that were adopted by the, the authority are still relevant today for local land use planning. And let me make one point particularly clear. The FAA adopted their standard of 65 decibel contour in 1979. I can't, I don't have to tell you that a lot has changed since 1979. And that, both that metric, the DNL metric, and that threshold, 65 decibels, has come under considerable criticism nationwide. In fact, Congress has ordered the FAA to examine whether or not both that metric and the threshold remain valid today or should be amended. And what we're seeing all over the country is both noise litigation and noise complaints are coming from areas far outside the 65 decibel contour line. And the reason is very simple. In 1979, people's concerns were mostly about how much noise each aircraft generated. It was really a year splitting. And probably very few people on this call are old enough to remember the, the Boeing Whisper Jet, which was no whisper at all, but thought of as, as quiet when it came out in the late 1970s. What people are now much more concerned about is occurrences. And that is, think of this as the dripping faucet. People can handle a drip now and then, but if that dripping faucet comes every several seconds, it almost doesn't matter how loud it is. It's very irritating. And so what we're seeing today is that most of the complaints about aircraft noise come as a result of the number of occurrences, how many aircraft are flying over them. And therefore, it's really important to look at the runway center line, to look where aircraft are going to fly, just as important as it is to look at the average noise level as measured by DNL. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Bill Sandifer.
Peter, thank you very much. So I'll, I'll transition now to a little bit more of a deep dive discussion on noise exposure and our contours. Brad did a really good job of talking about the 92 contours versus what we generated in Vision 2040. I, I won't go into any detail anymore here. You're, you're all very familiar that the 92 contours were used as the basis for creation of what, what we know today as, as the Airport Overlay District. And, and our concerns, again, primarily relate to, not, not the elimination of large portions, I'll put a little finer point on it, the allowance of residential development in portions of the Airport Overlay District that historically have not permitted those types of uses. And y'all have seen this graphic before, Brad had up in his presentation. I just want to, I'm not going to focus on the colors. I want you to focus attention on the shape. Because when I, when I get to the next slide, it will become very, very important real quickly as I describe for you the importance of the Airport Overlay District as it relates to what Peter described in terms of concentrated overflight traffic and where we're starting to see significant citizen complaints across this nation related to aircraft overflight activity. So let me really explain what you're seeing here. Some of you have seen it before, some of you haven't. So I'm going to take some time. The, the graphic on the right, the multicolor, might show up in blue, might show up in purple, the dark and the lighter portions are the jurisdictional boundaries of the town of Morrisville. And, and red is the current, the largest portion of the Airport Overlay District, kind of in, in a brownish mustard color, is the portion on the western side of NC 54. You, you will see in the upper right-hand corner of that graphic, the, kind of the runway outline and Terminal 2 and roadway system, that's RDU. And, and what you see with a, a black extended line and a green extended line, those are the extended runway center lines for an aircraft arriving on runway five right or five left. Now, I'm going to focus on green for a second. So, so green, and you see a bunch of numbers. So as, as an aircraft is on the final approach, and, and mind you, the final approach begins at what's called a final approach fix, which on this approach is 7.1 nautical miles from the end of the runway. And as they're flying in towards the, the runway five right, they're descending. They're descending on a vertical track. That's, that's pre-programmed, that's, that's a navigational aid that the pilot uses in the cockpit to kind of get to the approach end of the runway. And as they descend, you can see in numbers height above the ground. So as you, as you begin to get closer to the runway, the aircraft begins to get closer to the ground. And, and the graphic on the left, and when I get to the one on the right, I'll explain it, but this is, this is a 737, which is a typical aircraft flown by all major airlines on the approach. And as they cross that pink dot on that green line, that is a noise monitor that we have installed that takes continuous readings for aircraft overflights and obviously picks up some background noise in the community at times. But, but as you can see in this graphic, that aircraft represents at that point a little bit over 80 decibels of what we call single event noise. You can, you can see other dots in the, kind of the surrounding community. Those are also noise monitors that would pick up the same kind of noise activity from that aircraft. But it's easy to understand that at that point where it crosses that noise monitor, it's almost 1,200 feet above the ground, as it continues to descend, noise perception will increase, noise levels will increase until it gets on the runway, slows down and essentially parks at the terminal. The graphic on the right are what I call flight tracks. Now, flight track data we pull from the FAA. So that's, that's nothing we generate. It comes from their radar systems and it comes into our aircraft noise and monitoring systems and we can run a report for any hour of the day, any day of the year. And this is representative of a 24-hour period that we pulled in the month of January between a couple of different days and represents a little bit under 400 arrivals to both of those runways over a 24-hour period of time. Now imagine, let's, let's do a little math here for a second. So RDU is open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Maybe to make it easier, let's say aircraft operations occur 20 hours of that day. So if you have 400 flights over a 20-hour period, that's essentially 20 operations an hour divided by 60, that's a flight arriving every three minutes, essentially. So what you see in, in the bright colors, all those flight tracks, all emerging, all merging onto the final approach course, painting a very concentrated arrival path to those runways. And as you see there, the outlines of the airport And as you see there, the outlines of the airport overlay district, virtually every single aircraft that lands at RDU flies through that airport overlay district. I'm going to take a pause for a second and bring in a little bit of a conversation that some of you were able to participate last week with the FAA when they introduced some of their performance-based navigation procedural changes that they're doing in the local area. And the reason for that conversation was FAA has been contemplating some changes to arrival procedures at RDU for many, many years. Those procedures will primarily involve changes from what we call the en route structure to the terminal structure, which occurs essentially more than five miles away from the airport. And the reason we wanted to engage the FAA, to have a public workshop around those procedural changes, is very, very simple. And it's the reason that Peter noted, and it's, we're not seeing a lot of noise complaints related to noise contours anymore. What we're seeing noise complaints in this country, and especially in major, what are called metroplexes, is as procedures change, we concentrate aircraft over a point on the ground repeatedly. And individuals who may live under those flight tracks, who may not have either been accustomed to that concentration, or had never previously experienced that concentration, are starting to complain, and complain in large numbers and very vocally to elected officials. So translate that kind of conversation into the slide on the right, meaning there's no way to get around the fact that aircraft arrivals to both of those runways are concentrated repeatedly. Think of a train track running through the middle of Morrisville. It begins at the final approach fix and it ends at the approach end of the runways. Train after train after train goes through the town of Morrisville in exactly the same spot over and over again, every three minutes. That's the concentration that we see in these final approach paths. Now, if you, you may wonder what happens on the departure side. The departure side, little bit different, because the departing aircraft, depending upon which, what I'll call an en route fix, which is essentially a roadway intersection in the sky, depending upon which en route fix they're navigating to, they can turn, maybe a little bit early. But the reality is, if you look at the graphic on the left, this is the flight track data, same period of time, same aircraft, departing runway two-three to the southwest, almost every single aircraft departs and flies immediately over what is the current airport overlay district. And again, same kind of data, if you look at the graphic on the right, you see jurisdictional boundaries of the town, you see the extended runway center lines, you see the height above ground in green as that aircraft departs, you see that pink dot with the decibel level noise reading from that aircraft as it flies over the top of that noise monitor, you can very, very clearly see the single-event noise impact, again, every three minutes, that that aircraft is going to produce for somebody who is standing within that area or living in that area as the aircraft fly over the top. And if you, if you look at what Brad called some subareas, you know, the draft plan identifies subareas within that airport overlay district, one being McCrimmon Parkway Extension, the other being Transit Oriented Development East, if I remember correctly. And our concern is, again, any type of residential unit that's developed in that area is going to experience significant and frequent overflight activity and single-event noise. And we are very, very concerned, not only about residential uses, but more specifically about uses that may in fact be considered to be affordable and workforce housing. Same conversation as it relates to Transit Development Oriented East. You can see the runway center lines that I depicted before. And I want to show you this graphic because it really begins to illustrate a little bit differently how single-event noise is going to be perceived potentially by somebody who either lives in the Transit Oriented Development or along McCrimmon Parkway. We've generated these noise contours based on single-event noise. And if you look very, very carefully, you can see underneath all those noise contours, and you can see the McCrimmon Extension, you can see the TOD, you can see the proposed rezoning request that you have on the agenda tonight for, I think you called it the Stitch Area or the former mall. That area bounded in red, based on single-event noise, aircraft flying over the top of that location is going to generate in excess of ninety decibels. You can see on departure from that runway, and this is just single runway departures, you can see within a large portion, single-event noise, eighty decibels and above. And if you look at it from an arrival perspective, and again, this is just arriving runway five left, the same would apply for runway five right. To model it together, it just gives way too much data and information, and you really can't see what you're looking at. But on the arrival, you're going to experience typically over eighty decibels, and in some cases, over eighty-five. So my point in this case is very, very simple. We're going to see significant concentrations of aircraft overflight activity, both on the arrival and the departure, which generate in excess of eighty decibels repeatedly. You know, we've been, we've been talking now for probably just about an hour, and in that period of time, if we were at peak, and this time of day is really about the peak that we experience, we'd have seen twenty overflights of activity. We were standing outside, we would have to stop because you wouldn't be able to converse underneath the flight activity. And maybe one final thing to point to before I get to our formal request, and that's this. The, I think, I think your staff and the consultant have done a very good job of trying to understand the premise and background behind the FAA's National Noise Standard, but that's really the only part of the story. The other part of the story is, what's the citizen actually going to see, feel, and hear when they live there? I will guarantee you, they're not going to understand what a DNL is, they're not going to understand what the FAA's National Noise Policy is, they're not really going to understand why it was created. All they're going to understand is, when I sit out on my porch in the morning and I try to have a cup of coffee, I can't talk to my wife, or my spouse, or my significant other, as she is trying to converse with me in the morning when aircraft are overflying my residence. That's what they're going to see, that's what they're going to hear, and that's what they're going to want to try and understand. And that's why we're, we are encouraging the council not to approve the draft land use plan change in the airport overlay district, because we don't believe it's in the best interest of either the town or the airport authority or the citizens of this community. So to put a finer point on that, our request is very, very simple. All we're really asking council members is that you acknowledge that the draft land use plan really proposes a material change to the airport overlay district, i.e. allowing residential uses where they historically have been prevented. And by doing so, that really is not in the mutual interest of the town and the authority, and we should avoid creating those land uses which will be incompatible, because if we allow them, we are essentially, potentially, creating litigation against the authority and/or the town like we've seen on prior occasions. So, Mr. Mayor, I will conclude there, and certainly Peter and I and others will be able to answer any technical questions anyone on council may have, and I will stop sharing my screen as soon as I can figure out how to do that. There we go.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Peter. We really appreciate the presentation. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati with a question, please.
Yes. Hi. Welcome back, Mr. Kirsch. Nice to see you again after all these years.
Thank you.
So I'm afraid that I'm going to need some specifics here, because I don't, it's not clear to me where exactly the contested area is, where we're proposing that there be residential, and where the airport thinks there should not be residential. Brad, could you speak to that? Because my understanding was that we're not proposing any residential in the Stitch, which was the only specific area that I heard about. So where, where is the, where's the contested area that we don't want resident, that the airport doesn't want residential, and we, our new land use plan proposes residential?
Sure. Yeah. And so basically, and whoever pulled it up, thank you for showing this map. So our current airport overlay district that restricts residential is everything, and we'll say east of fifty-four, even though it's technically north, the way the road runs, but everything east of that dark line in the middle of the map. So basically where it ends being blue and where it says fifty-four, over to the eastern side of our jurisdiction by I forty. Currently, that is restricting residential development of all kinds, but not just residential development, certain other sensitive uses as well, including schools and other sensitive facilities. Our proposal is to take into account RDU's third runway plans and the potential noise contour shifts that may be involved in that, and only amend the area up till about transair drive, which you can kind of see, it does a little zigzaggy here. And that is really to account for the transit-oriented development, which would be the northernmost development in this amended area. Without that amended area, residential would not be allowed at all. And we, many feel, and the consultants feel, that that would be detrimental to the transit station potential there, especially with BRT, Bus Rapid Transit, which would potentially run along Chapel Hill Road, the station being on the eastern side of Chapel Hill Road. You essentially would prohibit that entire use. GO Triangle has expressed concern of not having residential there. They need a critical mass of ridership to make that transit station work. That, also, real quickly, that would be considered the RDU stop essentially for transfers from that station to Raleigh-Durham International Airport. So it's a very important stop along the, you know, almost as important as probably RTP stop along the regional system. And so that's kind of the motivation of why we stopped just above that TOD east area. And then, of course, the other area we're looking at is the newly-built McCrimmon Parkway Extension area. You know, our town council expressed a lot of interest in, you know, seeing a new diverse set of uses there, really capitalizing on the major, major investment made by the town in opening up that land. There's also some future transportation improvements planned for that corridor with a giant flyover going over, you know, from McCrimmon Parkway going over Chapel Hill Road and coming back down around Church Street. So you're going to see a lot of investment in that area in the future as well. And so the, there's a sentiment that, you know, what better way to capitalize that on that investment than to kind of reexamine the area in the land use plan? And so there's certainly some opportunities in that area as well.
Okay. That does clarify, but if, if people move into an area or develop an area and the airport is already there, don't, doesn't whoever sells them their property have a responsibility to disclose that they're in an airport flyover? Doesn't that, does that not protect the airport and the town from litigation in that, in that realm?
I'll let, it looks like Mr. Kirsch wants to answer that.
This is Peter Firsch. Let me respond to that. Legally, you're right. That is, navigation incidents or notices protect against litigation. But I don't have to tell you that litigation is not the only cause of concern. That is, that around the country, there are several dozen instances probably where homeowners have sued, some successfully, some not, airports. But much more important is the level of community unrest, the level of community concern, frankly, the number of times that community members come to speak at town council meetings and authority meetings. That is, that, that doesn't keep people from complaining, it doesn't keep people from putting intense political pressure on the locality to address the problem. In fact, almost all instances of noise problems around airports come from people who moved into the area once the airport was there. After all, many of these airports have been around for fifty or seventy-five or nearly a hundred years. And so although we as lawyers can protect against liability, we can't protect against political pressure and political concern.
And I certainly appreciate that point, but I have to tell you that I'm getting far more political pressure and political concerns over the potential quarry lease that has been a bone of contention for, ever since I came onto the council. I mean, I don't know, I guess I, I guess I kind of questioned the concern for the experience of the Morrisville citizen. I'm sorry if that's, I'm sorry if that came out blunter than it should have, but I, I really feel it's important to make that point. I will now stop talking, I'm sorry, I used up way more than my allotted time.
No, we're here to have a discussion. So to answer your question, the orange area in the middle is essentially the area that they hope that we would not start to allow residential.
Yeah, the overlay covers, you know, around a quarter of our entire town's jurisdiction. So you're basically taking a quarter of our town's ability to build housing in that area away with maintaining that overlay district. We certainly understand there's noise considerations, a hundred percent are on board with that. LSK, and again, very helpful in clarifying that, been very direct, has not relented in expressing the airport's position on that. And I think that is a big motivation as to why we've since revised some of these recommendations to, you know, not interfere with potential noise contour shifts, third runway, the potential of the third runway at least. We don't foresee a lot of owner-occupied units in this area. We're really envisioning this to be more multifamily. You may get the potential for condominium units, although there hasn't been any express interest in those from development community. We are, we're recommending not having any single-family units whatsoever. And of course, we are wanting to require noise sound mitigation. You'll notice in the twenty-fourteen contours that we're really not even in the fifty-five zone in most of these areas, really down to the fifty, no, I'm sorry, the sixty, really down to the fifty-five decibel area, it looks like, in most of these proposed areas. And even then, even though the FAA doesn't recommend noise attenuation in those areas, we still want to recommend that, just again, to be responsive to your concerns.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. West. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rau, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, I just had a, two comments and then just a quick question. But first of all, I just want to thank John Kane and the RDU Airport leadership for being here. And I think I speak for all of us that we always value the contributions of the airport, and we know that you're going through a tough time right now. So we all want you to be successful. And I just want the public to know that's how I feel, but I know my public's so that way. I guess there's basically two concerns that I have. I mean, you know, I get the impact and the quality of life and the noise issue, but my concern is that if we keep it industrial, I do believe that we are going to be hurting our own long-term economic interests, just in terms of not having multifamily or some residential near the transit. And a lot of our land use over the years, there's been a lot of public input that's gone in, has been about having sort of a transit-oriented friendly environment. And I know John Kane, I mean, when you look at Northfield and the success of any of his developments, it's always been, I mean, I used to go to Northfield all the time before COVID, is how he was able to build a residential in a walkable community. And so this area of Morrisville, if there wasn't an airport overlay question, I'd be curious as to John's, you know, input as a world-class, one of the best developers in our state, probably country, of what the other options are for us. Because if it can't be industrial, industrial for me is not going to make sense for us. And so I don't know, I've heard in the past about hotels and, you know, different types of retail, but without the rooftops, you know, that would be a tough thing. The second observation I would make is that noise abatement. In these previous lawsuits, would, you know, were the noise abatements, you know, kind of innovations there in place that, that, you know, that did not, you know, that did not give citizens the ability to have sort of that noise protection when there were these lawsuits? And what would staff say about, you know, I know you guys have worked on noise abatement, limiting the size of multifamily, I mean, in terms of how many units can be approved? So that's really my question. We can't answer all of this tonight, but what I would like to see is a solution that is a win-win for the airport and that we're reducing their fears of litigation. Councilmember Garamella in the past has brought up, could we have some kind of a waiver clause that we, but you know, you can never waive, like Peter said, you can never waive your legal rights. But I think if somebody bought a house in this area, I wish that, you know, signing a lease or document would in good faith imply that, you know, you're buying, you're renting a place here that is close to the airport. But, you know, maybe I'm being naive on my part, and I guess those are my main concerns, just looking at the economic impact while at the same time balancing the quality of life. So I'll stop there, and those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Would anyone with the airport authority like to address? Would anyone with the Airport Authority like to address Mr. Rouse's concerns? No questions?
Uh, Steve, I'll, I'll, I'll start by saying, this is John Kane. Uh, I hear what you're saying relative to, uh, you're wanting something besides industrial there, and I fully support that. I think that's actually a really good thing. And I think, you know, you can do effective mixed use without residential. Uh, I won't say that residential does not add a lot to it. It does, and I think that a lot of the success of the mixed use project that, that we have done in both downtown Raleigh and at North Hills, having the residential there has been very important. So I, I recognize that. I think that as a developer, what I would be concerned with is, uh, building a, I would be very concerned about doing affordable workforce housing there. That would really concern me because I think that, uh, that heightens the idea of people that are, uh, already, um, challenged financially to, to, to have to live there versus, uh, market rate housing. Uh, I think it would, I think that would be subject to, uh, a real concern to the airport and I would think to the town as well. You know, I think market driven residential rental is a little bit different, uh, but my concern, and again, I'm speaking as a developer now, now that, not as, not as chair of the board, but, uh, my concern there would be to go in and do high end residential, whi- which is what we have done and what many others have done here. You know, will it hold its value? Will it hold its rents? Will it actually be a good investment for people due to the noise, uh, issues that would be there? That would be my concern as a developer. Um, I think you can create, you know, a great mixed use environment with, uh, if you think about it, at North Hills on the old mall side, where I used to see you at the gym all the time, when you came over to work out, uh, you know, we don't have any residential on that side of the street. And that side of the street's been very successful. Our hotel there does, the Renaissance does very, very well. All of our retail does well. All of our office says the least. So I think you can do effective mixed use without residential, but I won't deny that it doesn't add a lot to the experience to have it there. And I hear loud and clear, I'm on Joe Malazo's, uh, board as well, and I hear loud and clear their desire to have residential, uh, near the stop. So I think we're all sympathetic to that. And I, I will just say, I think I can speak for the rest of the board and for the staff that we want to reach the right compromise with you all. Uh, we want to be good partners in the community and good partners to the town of Morrisville as well, as well as the other adjacent, uh, communities, and we'll work hard to try to find the right compromise here.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, RDU.
If, if I may, this is Peter Kirsch. If I may jump in, um, Mr. Rouse's questions, I think there are two points to be made. First of all, when you put workforce housing nearest to the airport, you run a serious risk that it will jeopardize the airport's ability to build further projects, including a third runway. And the reason being that federal law prohibits the FAA from approving projects that have a disproportionate impact on lower income communities. And if we show that the only people, the only residences that are being affected by projects are lower income in Morrisville, that could literally stop the project, would those, could prevent FAA approval. So that's point number one, that is, putting workforce or lower income housing closest to the airport is exactly what can stop projects. The second piece, let me just tell you a short war story, which is at the other extreme. Westchester County, New York, um, o- over the airport's objection, the town built a very high-end town home and condominium development off the end of the runway. It was so close that their clubhouse had a little red light on it, uh, because it was the approach light for the airport. They thought it was just decorative. Um, all of the homeowners signed a notice, all of the homeowners signed an navigation easement, so that the airport was not facing any legal liability. However, a good five years on, this community organized as the anti-airport.
Mr. Kirsch, I think you accidentally muted yourself.
Uh, maybe I should have. Um, that, that, what, what, what happened in Westchester County is this group, although they had no legal rights, organized the airport opposition group and were the permanent, uh, anti-airport group, literally for a generation, and they continue to be a thorn in the side of the airport, even though, or maybe because they don't have any legal rights. So these, these are not purely hypothetical issues when you allow residential too close to an airport. It be, it, it really creates a sense of political tension that doesn't exist otherwise.
So thank you, Mr. Kirsch, for clarifying, uh, the federal importance of workforce housing in that area. That hasn't been something that we've discussed, but that is definitely something that we will keep in mind, uh, moving forward. Uh, you mentioned earlier, the navigation easements do actually provide some legal protections, um, to sort of answer Councilmember Rouse's question earlier. Um, Councilmember Fender, please, followed by, um...
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll keep my comments short since it seems like we've gone, um, way over our, uh, time and we have a town council meeting starting at six. Um, I guess I just real, no one has talked, no one has said anything about putting affordable housing in, uh, the area of the airport overlay. Um, I think that is a, um, a distraction to the discussion here, and I really don't understand what the concern is for putting multifamily homes in this area, especially given the most recent noise contours that Brad has shown. We're not talking about putting single family homes. We haven't even talked about town homes. Um, you know, the, we already have, um, apartment very, very close to this area and, um, you know, as a Morrisville resident, having planes over our head all the time is, is part of living here. Um, so I guess I really don't understand what the big fear is of having apartment in that overlay, uh, overlay. I have not heard one complaint from a resident, um, about airport noise. However, like, like Councilmember, um, Rabadi said, I've heard lots of complaints about the potential quarry going in right beside, um, Umstead Park. If you truly worried about angry residents and truly concerned about doing no harm, you wouldn't be leasing the public land, uh, for, uh, another quarry right beside our beautiful, uh, state park. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. I'll recognize Mayor Potem, um, actually, uh, Rob Tier has been raising his hand over and over, and I think he's with the Airport Authority. Is there something that you wanted to add before I recognize Mayor Potem Johnson? Mr. Tier with your team, Mr. Sanderford?
He is, Mayor. Mr. Tier, are you muted?
Uh, how about now?
Yes, we can hear you.
We can hear you.
Okay. Uh, I want to make a statement. It can be at the very end, Mayor, if you want to go ahead with some other people.
Okay, yeah, because we have about 10 minutes left, so I want to definitely give our council a chance to share their thoughts. A comment from, uh, Mayor Potem Johnson, please.
Thank you. And, and you're right, we're getting late here because we, some of us have to drive now to town hall for a 6:00 PM council meeting. But, um, I want to thank you all very much, all of you from the board, um, from RDU Authority for being here. Um, I, I heard, um, the comments about a partnership, um, that's very valuable to us. That's why we're here and we're glad you have finally shown up to share with us. We appreciate that very much. I have, uh, and I'm not, I'm going to try not to repeat everything that's already been said, but Mr. Sanderford, the slides that you shared tonight, I thought some of them were new to us. I don't recall, and maybe that's, you know, just my mistake, but if you could share those slides with us, that would be great. Um, so that's one comment. Um, I, I, I think you also made a comment about stand outside and see, hear and feel. Um, I would agree with you on that. I think, um, I've done that. Um, I think we, uh, probably have all done that at one point or another because we live in this town, but I agree with that comment. I think that's important for us to see, hear and feel. Um, and then, you know, my last, well, and then I, I have agreed just about with everything my, um, fellow council members have said to this point, so I, I don't want to repeat those, those comments. But, um, one thing that's kind of struck me here, um, is that you all are relying on a 1992 noise contour map, and yet our staff is relying on a 2014 noise contour map. So, um, if somebody wants to help me understand that, um, uh, I, I, you know, for me, it's kind of coming down to that. So that, that's a question. And then the last comment I'm going to make is, I was on the November 5th, um, FAA call and I'm looking at my notes that I took, and one of the comments that was made, and I think it may have been during the, uh, video that was played, was how there, there are new procedures for arrivals and departure that, um, afford, uh, uh, more, uh, security and a reduction in noise levels. So that, I mean, I, I wrote that in my notes from that meeting. So, uh, I'm trying to, um, I'm trying to put all these different pieces of information together and, and, um, and, you know, I need some help doing that, quite frankly. And that, and I'm going to leave it at that for now. Thank you.
I, I can address that real quickly, Mr. Mayor, if you'll permit me to. The, the, the piece about the FAA presentation you saw the other day, what, what their message was, the procedures that are changing are probably outside of five miles around the airport, so they're not close in. They're, they're really in the en route and terminal structure, so there, there really are no material changes to noise or anything outside those areas, really has nothing to do with the town of Morrisville and the current procedures that are in place for arrivals and departures. And if, be, be happy to orchestrate another meeting with the FAA so we can clarify that point, so you can hear directly from them. If you'd like, be happy to do that. Second thing is that the differences between the contours are very, very simple. The, the 1992 contours are really the only contours that have ever been officially approved by the board. And yes, we generated new noise contours as part of Vision 2040, but we specifically asked the board at that point in time to reaffirm the validity of the 1992 contours, and those should be the only contours used in the local community for planning. So that, that is the distinction between the two.
Okay. And so to clarify, who are you referring to when you say officially approved by the board? What board?
Our Airport Authority Board.
Okay, not FAA, but...
No, ma'am.
Got it.
Anything else, Mayor Potem? Okay, seeing none. I just had a couple of comments. Um, I believe that our collaboration in the past was based on the noise itself, not geography. Um, so given that we have new data about the noise, uh, pretty much what Mayor Potem was saying, uh, we have new data, so I think that, uh, changing the contours could be fine. I think we have, through this process, created a collaborative, balanced approach as per last time, um, and that's why we've already made a number of compromises, uh, to try to meet both the needs of the airport moving forward and us. I'm very much counting on navigation easements to ease any lit- litigation. Uh, we are elected officials. We are used to having pressure. Uh, we welcome the feedback from our residents about how to make their lives better. So I imagine that that's going to continue to happen. Uh, one of the maps that you said about the single noise incidents, those lines were going well outside Morrisville. Um, that's always going to happen, uh, but I think that we will be in a position to explain that the benefits of having the airport nearby, uh, far away, uh, the inconvenience of the noise, as, uh, Councilmember Pender has said, it's part of what we're used to. A lot of us have already signed navigation easements. Um, so I'm not really looking for reaction, I just want to share those two thoughts, um, that I think we're already meeting halfway and we really appreciate Ellis Caden being part of the team. I'll recognize, uh, Councilmember Scruggins Johnson now for a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would like to thank the RDU Authority, um, for meeting with us this evening. The information shared is important because we are neighbors and we have to have an ongoing dialogue as the airport, um, evolves and changes, just as Morrisville evolves and changes. Um, the land use considerations with the plan updates are very, um, significant changes in some areas and others they're not. We really want to have transit in Morrisville, and the TOD area is important to our town because it, it links us to the region and just like the airport links us to the world. So somehow we have to find a balance, um, with both our regional neighbors as well as RDU going forward. So I hope this is the beginning of a dialogue and not a one-time meeting. It's important that we explore the feedback that we each have received this evening and consider it, and then, um, possibly, uh, schedule some follow-up discussion because I think it's imperative that we work together. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd now like to recognize Rob Tier.
You might be on mute again.
Mr. Tier, your show is muted. Mr. Tier, we still can't hear you? There was maybe a different button, because your team's microphone seems to be on.
I had another number. You should be able to hear me now.
We can, sir. Uh, we have just a couple minutes for your session.
I was getting... Yep. Let me get on it. Anyway, I succeeded my father, uh, on the authority. He had served 31 years and he and I together have served over 50 years. I remember well during the eighties and nineties, er, and nineties, the angst, the RDU went through, oh, complaints related to air traffic noise, as I got a steady dose of conversation over dinner with my father. At this time, the airport established a noise committee to fuel the growing number of complaints related to air traffic noise. As I remember, RDU spent a significant amount of money, time, energy and attention over the decades and worked diligently to develop a coalition between the airlines and neighboring government entities to reach a common solution to limit future noise complaints. The Airport Overlay District was a product of this collaboration and has successfully helped to mitigate noise exposure in communities near the airport. The noise issue has not been treated lightly by the airport and not without major expense, but what is not a product of its making, it, of its making, but a product of the citizens of the Triangle have demanded as they requested more airline service and more growth. Noise unfortunately is a secondary effect of the Triangle's success. My colleagues on the authority respect the request that time-tested airport overlay districts left understored as a respect and serenity of all of our citizens. Thank you.
Thanks very much for sharing that, Mr. Tier, and we thank you and your father for their service to the greater community of our region. Um, well, I guess I'll, go ahead. Does our staff, Morrisville staff, have any last comments before I give RDU a moment to close out?
Just, just wanted to thank, uh, again, RDU and then specifically Ellis Caden for participating in this process and for the feedback offered to us during the development of this plan.
Okay. Mr. Sanderford, Mr. Kane, either of you have any last thoughts before we close out?
Uh, yeah, we'd just like to thank you for the dialogue. I think it's been healthy and I think our, our two respective teams have worked well together, and I think we're trying to find the right answer for this, and I think that through, uh, continued dialogue, we will find the right answer. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, for your whole team. I'd like to thank fellow council members and staff for making the time to, uh, have this special meeting. We are hopeful that we can set up further communications with the Airport Authority to try to get to a good solution, a good compromise for everyone. It's going to meet everyone's needs moving forward, um, and perhaps talk on some of the other subjects which, uh, were broached tonight as well. Um, so at this time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this special meeting. I recognize Council- I recognize Councilmember Rau. Councilmember Rau, I believe you're muted, would you like to make a motion? I will recognize Councilmember Abadi for a motion.
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I recognize Mayor Protim Johnson.
I will second that motion.
Town Clerk Eric Smith, will you please do a roll call vote on that motion?
Councilmember Fender?
Mayor, I lost my connection, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rau? Councilmember Rau? Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to adjourn passes.
Thank you all once again very much. It is 5:32, we are adjourned. We will reconvene, uh, some of us at Town Hall, some of us remotely at 6:00 PM for our regular meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.